sickness and all this stuff.
Amen.
We've had a lot that are out. I was making account today. We have over nineteen people out sick. So, and Brother Farmer's like, is this all your people? And it's like, it's not all of our people. Promise you, the church is growing. It really is. We have great numbers and God, our numbers are getting better and better, and this is going to help us grow exponentially. And so, I'm thankful for Brother and Sister Farmer here, our very, very close friends, Papa Nana, and we're thankful for them. Thankful for the Brother and Sister Walker is here tonight.
Amen.
If you don't know Brother and Sister Walker, or like, we're just really blessed. I don't know if you really realize that this district is blessed with such great elders in Pentecost, apostolic elders. And Brother and I count Brother and Sister Walker as some of our closest friends. They just loved us when we were unlovable, and you know, and become very great friends for us when we were evangelizing, when we were here, but we just loved them. We're so welcome, and they're always welcome, any time, anywhere. And we're just blessed with their presence. Amen. All right. Tonight, a little bit more informal. I know that she's up on that piano, but I'm not feeling that. If you just wanna, maybe let's just go through one small chorus, and let's just all sing together, this one small chorus, and, and then we'll turn it over to Brother Farmer. Let Brother Farmer do his thing today. Can we sing together?
Amazing grace, thou seeest the sound as saved, the rich I be.
Hallelujah.
I once was lost, but now I've found what's mine, but now I see.
Aren't you happy? Hallelujah, we're singing.
Amazing grace, thou seeest the sound as saved, the rich I be. I once was lost, but now I've found what's mine, but now I see. Through me, the angels' forces, things, things, I have already come. Twas grace that had come, these days, the spark, and grace will lead me home.
Sing Amazing Grace again.
Amazing grace, thou seeest the sound as saved, the rich I be.
Hallelujah.
I once was lost, but now I've found what's mine, but now I see.
Hallelujah, let's just worship the Lord tonight. Thank you, God, for your Amazing Grace. Thank you, God, for your love, your mercy. God, we just give you all our praise tonight. Hallelujah. Won't you sing? Let's sing thanks. Let's sing.
Thanks, thanks, I give you thanks for all you've done.
Aren't you thankful tonight?
I am so blessed, my soul has come rest, oh Lord, I give you thanks. Thanks, I give you thanks for all you've done. I am so blessed, my soul has come rest, oh Lord, I give you thanks.
Let's sing it one more time.
Thanks, thanks, I give you thanks for all you've done. I am so blessed, my soul has come rest, oh Lord, I give you thanks. And he walks with me, and he talks with me, and he tells me, I am the joy.
And the joy.
And the joy we share, as we tear within, nor other has ever known.
Hallelujah, let's just love the Lord today. All Jesus wants to do is have fellowship with mankind. He wants to walk with us, He wants to talk with us, He wants to commune with us. His greatest desire is to have eternal fellowship with His creation. Amen. And tonight, we're bringing a man of God to this pulpit, is going to help us bring our friends, our brothers, our sisters, our neighbors and our coworkers, to help them meet Christ, and so they can too also have fellowship eternal. Amen. We're just so thankful for Brother Farmer, Sister Farmer tonight. The man of God, my very good friend, Brother Farmer, would you come? And, Sister Farmer, would you come and help us tonight? In Jesus' name.
Praise the Lord, everybody. Praise the Lord, everybody. I just have a real short scripture reading before my husband comes on up to teach this Bible lesson. The Bible lesson that he's going to give tonight will hopefully give you some tips and pointers about giving Bible study. This study is very pointed, and the goal of it is to get someone to the point of salvation.
Amen.
The great plan of salvation is in the Word of God, right? The repentance and the baptism in Jesus' name for the remission of sins, and the infiling of the Holy Ghost. This is what people need to enter into the kingdom, right? I want to read just really quickly First Timothy, Chapter four, verse fourteen. This is, we also call it marching Timothy, and what he should do. And I think that's a wonderful admonition for all of us to hear, "Neglecting out the gift that is in thee," it says in verse fourteen, "which was given thee by prophecy, with the laid on of the hands of the presbytery." Meditate upon these things. Give thyself holy to them, that thy propitie may appear to all." Do you know that's how we're a witness, when our propitie appears to all? Amen. "Take heed unto thyself and unto thee doctrine; for it is the doctrine." Continuing them, for in doing this, thou shalt both save thyself and them that hear thee." This admonition is amazing and is wonderful, and it's good for every one of us to recognize that God's Word is powerful. And when we use His Word, it can save not only ourselves, but it can also save those that hear us, as we give His words. With that, I want my husband to come on up and do his Bible lesson, and I hope that y'all learn from it and give some great tips on how to help souls to escape.
Amen. Thank you, Sister Farmer. Good job. Amen. Give her a hand clap.
She is a good teacher, a good preacher. Went on for three weeks at a time in the Red Dog Mine when we were starting. The church is up there. She was pastor, Bible teacher, bus driver, Sunday School leader. She was a song leader. She did it all. And when I come home, Brother Whipper, I just try not to mess up her church. Amen. Amen. You can go ahead and flip that screen on here if you'd like to, Brother. We'll get that one here. This is not the... You can go ahead and sit down in the name of the Lord. Thank you. I'm here looking for the screen. And it comes up right there. So, in my name, it was the settings. I have the settings and then over. Anyway, while he's doing that, I want to let you guys know where this Bible study come from. I was at the Red Dog Mine, the Lord had asked me to go to a service. And at that time, services started at eight o'clock at night. And anyway, I went, and it was late for my shift. But anyway, I went, this man, to make a long story short, this man taught this lesson, and it could have been, Brother Whipper, it could have been you or me teaching the lesson. Well, it may have to be hooked up to your Wi-Fi.
Oh, yes, it does.
So, that may be an issue. So, anyway, try that. Y'all come up just a second. There we go. But anyway, I'll get down here and let him do that. So, anyway, he taught on the two doves, and the Old Testament. One is killed, the other one's dipped in the other one's blood, then set free. And man, it was just like one of us teaching that lesson. It was amazing. And I was going, go, go, go. I mean, I was rooting for this guy. Because, man, this was right, just like we would preach it. And he come down to the end of this deal there, and he never landed a plane. Never taught us how to apply the blood. And so, I waited around. This guy was the head of the UPC, or the head of the Friends, yeah? Is it ready now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, here it goes. Zero, two, three, three. You could have done that. I could have been wrong. All right. I'm gonna let you come do this, and I'll finish my story. Okay, so, anyway, I basically, to make a long story short, I asked him, I said, "Robert, that's a good message, man. I appreciate you." He said, "Well, thank you." And I said, "Man, I was wondering, you didn't show us how to apply the blood?" And he goes, "Oh, I didn't get there, did I?" And I said, "No, you didn't." And I said, "How do you apply the blood?" He said, "Well, you believe." And I said, "Awesome. That's amazing." And I said, "You know, I've been taught something a little different. You know, I just want to see where you got that. Would you mind taking an evening and show me in the Bible where you got that, and maybe you can enlighten me, help me?" And he goes, "I would love to." I started a Bible study for this guy in Robert Shelton. He's the head of the Friends organization all across the Indian Pact nation. So, anyway, awesome, thank you. So, anyway, I went home late that night, with the man that the word come back, and I got Search for Truth one and two. I got Exploring God's Word, one and two, Into His Marvelous Light, and in my father's house. I had every UPC Bible study they had. And I had land, all of the land. And I said, "Okay, Lord, what are we gonna do?" Because he always gives me direction. I felt so inadequate. And so, what I did, Brother Whipper, is I told him, I said, "Lord, I feel inadequate. I need your help." Now, here's what God did not do. I mean, this morning, I was teaching some things. It's what's not there. This is what did not happen. What did not happen, the Lord didn't speak to me, but, "Well, Brother Farmer, you know, hey, let me help you with this. I'll give you some scriptures, and you know, we'll work on this together." He didn't do that. What he did, he dropped a scripture in my mind. And I went, "Oh." So, I went to had my computer. I went to it, pulled it up on my olive tree. I copied it, I pasted it to a Word pad. As soon as that thing pasted, he gave me another one in my mind. I went to it, I copied and pasted. And that's the way this went. So, this is all Bible. It's ever been of its Bible. The Bible, to me, is all red. It's the Word of God from one end to the other. So, when you see it, the black is just me putting my numbers on there, and a little note to myself, remind me what this means or whatever. And when you see the Bible in red highlighting, that's just something I don't want to miss.
Right.
It's just something that's normally pretty important to me. Now, this, you don't have to use this Bible study. If you've got a favorite Bible study, and it's working for you, then good. But if you've given Bible studies ten times and only caught one fish, I challenge you to use this Bible study. I challenge you. Hey, look, you know what? You know what is disappointing to me, is when I share this, and I give this to people, and I'll give it all over the country, and I can do my best convinced to use it, and then I go back, I travel back, and I go up in church, and I'll say, "Hey, man, how many Bibles have you given home? They're doing pretty good." And after this point, I said, "Have you ever used the study I gave you?" "Well, no, not yet."
Right.
And immediately, I'm thinking, man, you know, why not? I mean, if somebody comes to me and says, "You know what? This really works."
Right.
I mean, this baptized fifty-four coworkers, and all that Indian Pact up there with this. Brother Hyder took this to Africa. He converted trinitarian churches, pastors, congregations with this study. Why? Because Art Farmer built it? No. That's not it. It's because of the order this study is in. God put it in a specific order.
Right.
And it is given to the recipient in this order. Don't change this. You may get to a place where you skip over something, and I implore you to do that. I'm gonna do that tonight. I can't finish it all in a limited amount of time. But oftentimes, I don't use the whole thing anyway. But I'll do it in His order, and then I'm watching the Spirit, I want the Spirit to lead me. So, I get to a place, and then I'll just go buy it, buy it. Go to the next. You know, if you don't feel the lead to do that particular group of scriptures, don't use it. Go to the next one. Does that make any sense?
Yes.
So, what this is here tonight, is I'm gonna start it, and now you know where it come from. God's giving you a hand clap and pray. Well, thank you for being here. Thank you, Brother Whipper. Went down there, everyone down to meet us at bed, thank you. That was a wonderful comfortable bed. Get a two-hour nap. Oh, that was awesome. Amen. Okay. So, there it is. You see it. You see the Souls Bible study. That's what this is about, about winning souls. Souls. I never give you a title for my message this morning, because I wasn't all hearing this morning, but the title this morning is Faith in the Seed. See, listen, you gotta quit thinking it's you.
Right.
It's not you. If anybody's got enough faith to read God's Word to somebody, the Word is gonna impact them.
That's right.
Not you. God's Word is sharp as a two-edged sword. It's His Word. Okay? So, anyway. So, anyway, I get them there, we start, we pray. And I say, "How may it, when He, the Spirit of truth, has come, He will guide you." He's gotta understand, this person does, that truth, amen, hallelujah, will come and guide you. "He who not speaketh himself whatsoever, he shall hear. He shall speak, show you things to come. He shall glorify me." This is Jesus talking. "He shall receive a mind, and shall show it unto you." Amen. The Spirit guides into all truth.
Right.
And up in this, John 12, forty-seven, "If any man hear my words and believe not, I judge him not. For I came not to judge the world, but to save the world. He that rejecteth me, receiveth not my words, and one that judge him. The word that I have spoken is saying, so judge him in the last day." People need to know that this honey bear, this Jesus, this full of love, this what they've been convinced is like a Buddha, he's from his belly, and he can anything you want.
Right.
He's coming back as a judge.
Right.
He's a kind, kind, loving, amen, spirit, but he's coming back as a judge. "The word that he has spoken shall judge us in the last day."
Right.
Luke twenty-one, thirty-three, thirty-four, "Heaven and earth shall pass away, but my words shall not pass away." Ah, no, not His words. And this is where he kind of clarifies, and this isn't Art Farmer's word.
Right.
It isn't your word.
Right.
Right, it isn't your word, and it's His word.
Amen.
You want to know what He, amen, Jesus Christ, has to say. Amen. "Take heed to yourself, lest in any time your hearts be overcharged with servitude, drunkenness, fears of this life, so that gain upon you unaware." Many people that we give Bible study to, they're not churchgoers.
Right.
They're not, they're not, all of a sudden, the Lord has drawn them to you. You're sitting down at their table, or your table, and you know what? They're serviting through life. They're gonna serve them through life. They're getting up in the morning, they're going to work, they're eating lunch, they're coming home, they're having a beer, they're just taking care of life, and trying to get through the best way they can, and something's missing.
Right.
And there's coming a day that's gonna just take them unaware. And you gotta point out, there is coming a day, you better take and pay attention to this.
Right.
This is your opportunity. Amen. Mark twenty-four, twenty-four, "There shall arise false priests, false prophets, shall show great signs and wonders, and so much as it was possible, they shall deceive the very elect." Here, I take a moment and ask them, "Do you know what the very elect is?" Many will say, "God?" No, they don't know. Let me tell you what, the very elect is the church.
Right.
So, if they're going to another church, a church that does not teach truth, this is the opportunity to plant the seed that their church could be deceived.
Right.
It's in the Word of God.
Amen.
Here's a good place to look in their eye, and you speak this to them, and you can watch a little flicker of doubt, or you'll see something, "No, I'm steadfast in what I believe." You may see either one, you know? But if you see that flicker of doubt, they go, "Wow, I better pay attention then." Then you got a live hook, you got a bite. You're fishing here. Amen. Hallelujah.
Amen.
Matthew seven, "Because straight is the gate, and narrow is the way that leadeth unto life." Everybody's gonna find it.
Right.
That's exactly what happens. They say, "Right," because they never read it.
Nope.
So, I start telling them, I say, "Well, read it." So, read it.
Few.
Few. What do you mean, everybody's not gonna find this?
Right.
Well, that ain't what I've been taught. I've been taught, if you believe, you're accepting it with my mouth, and that I'm saved. Everybody's... But this is the Word of God. This is part of what we're gonna be judged on. Amen. Amen. Few are gonna believe that find it. Not everyone is saith, "Lord, Lord, shall enter into the kingdom of heaven." But he that doeth well on my Father, which is in heaven. So, not everyone that says, "Lord, Lord," not everyone that goes to church.
Right.
Not everyone is just a believer. But he that doeth, there's something to do.
Right.
There's something to do in the kingdom of God. There's something to do to get into the kingdom of God.
Right.
A lot of times, this is Greek to them. They don't understand it. They don't know. What is the Word of God? You're putting the Word of God in front of them. It's not a pamphlet.
Right.
Now, I don't disagree with pamphlets, you want to use them. But I tell you what, I find it more, it works better if the Word of God's in front of them. When I normally teach them a screen, like this, I have a King James Bible close by, and I tell them, "Get it up. Bring your Bible." So, if they bring a Bible, if they bring an NIV Bible, I know right away that they are missing a lot of Bible, because the NIVs take a lot of the Word of God out.
Right.
I already know that. If they bring a King James Bible, or some other version, pretty close, they're sitting down there, what I do is when I get to something, and I can buy their body language, I can tell whether they've ever heard this or seen this before, they go, "Hmm." I say, "Let's look in your Bible." I make them go to the page, and I see, this is one thing that experience gives you. If I tell them to go to this Matthew seven, and if they're looking in the Old Testament, I know they haven't looked in their Bible very often.
Right.
Don't that just make sense? That's just not rocket science.
Right.
But in two seconds, you can know whether they read their Bible.
Right.
If they take a turn of that scripture, go exactly in the right spot, you're dealing with somebody that reads their Bible around them.
Right.
Okay? But I make them read it in their own Bible. Amen. So, I prove to them that not everyone is saying to me, "Lord, Lord, shall enter the kingdom of heaven," but he that doeth, there's something to do. Amen. Many will say to me, "To me in thy name, Lord, Lord, have we not prophesied in their name? In thy name cast out devils? In thy name many a word works?" Let me tell you what, they know His name. His name is Jesus.
Right.
And let me tell you something else. You don't have to have the power of the Holy Ghost with that name of Jesus to work.
Right.
You can be out there, and I'm just about into a head-on, and then go, "Jesus!" And then, you'll be right in a crash, and that don't mean you're saved.
Right.
That don't mean that you're in the kingdom of God. You know what that means? In the name of Jesus works.
Right.
That's what that means. Jesus' name works, whether you're in the true church or not. And so, amen. So, these guys knew their name, and Jesus said, "I will profess them to them." I never knew you. You know me, but I don't know you.
Right.
This would be like the President of the United States landing his helicopter out here.
Right.
And we're gonna run out there, Brother Whipper and I, we're gonna run out there and say hi, you know? And so, we run out there, and here comes security. They got their guns out of that helicopter, and they're pointing guns at us, and whatever, they're protecting their president. But if the president and us was on, we were FaceTiming each other, and he knew us, and we were heading out of that helicopter, he would say, "Hey, don't I know them guys. Let them in." See, there's a knowing. He says, "I never knew you. You knew me. You heard about me. You know my name, but you don't know me. There's no relationship."
Right.
And this is something you gotta teach. People will look at you. I got a Bible study with a guy the other day. I'll do it when I get home. Amen. And he's going to AA. And I told him, "Well, you know what the problem with AA is?" He said, "What's that?" I said, "You're always an alcoholic." He goes, "Well, yeah, that's what they're teaching. You're always an alcoholic." And I said, "Well, I serve a God that delivers. I serve a God that delivers." My God, you're not always an alcoholic.
Right.
You're not always a drug addict. And I got a Bible study with this guy, and guess which one I'm gonna teach you?
Right.
I got one shot at this guy. I want to teach something I know works.
Right.
Amen? Okay, so, what we tell people, this is not about religion. They think it's about religion. It's not about religion. It's about relationship.
Right.
We're leading them to a relationship with Jesus Christ. We don't want him to look at them and go, "I never knew you."
Right.
Well, you had the wrong Bible study, if that happens. Well, come on.
Come on.
That's the truth, right? "I never knew you." He that work iniquity. Brother Booker, years ago, he explained iniquity the best way I've ever heard it. He said, "Iniquity is self-will." So, let me break this down to where we live. This says, "I'm gonna serve Jesus how I want to serve Him. I don't care what that book says."
Right.
That's why you gotta use the Word of God, because they're gonna argue with the Word and not you.
Right.
It ain't your word. Stop worrying about your word. Answer the question with Bible. Amen. Put this in front of them. Iniquity. They just want to serve Him the way they want to serve Him. Amen. So, here's an interesting chapter, Matthew twenty-two and ten. This is where the servants went out on the highways, and they gathered the good and the bad, and they come to the ground to the wedding feast, and was first to the guests. The king came in to see the guests. He saw there a man which had not on a wedding garment. I want you to look very closely here. He said, "Friend, how camest thou..." He said, friend, how camest thou in hither, not having on a wedding garment?
Right.
Now, this is farmer, this is some of that stuff I was telling you about, that's not there. If that was me, Brother Booker, and I was invited to the wedding feast, and I come in there, and man, the presence of God come in that place, holy, holy, you know, and the king looked at me, and he said, where's your, hey bub, where's your wedding garment?
Right.
I said, you know what, king, ah, nobody told me about a wedding garment, where's it at? I'll put it on, what can help me here, right? But this guy's speechless, you know why he's speechless? Because he's already saved. He's already saved, I don't need a wedding garment, I'm fine, I'm getting invited, I, I'm a believer.
Come on.
And I teach that. That's exactly what I'm teaching, and he's speechless, because he has nothing to say.
Right.
Why not, why else aren't you speechless? If that hadn't been me, I promise you, I would not be speechless. If this ain't the right garment, let me get on the right one for you, king.
Right.
Come on now, amen, and you teach that, and it has an effect. He said to the servants, bind them hand and foot, take them away, cast them out of darkness, there should be weeping and gnashing of teeth, or many are called, but few are chosen. And, and, and as you're teaching this, you'll see the reaction from them. Most people have never seen these Bible, they've never seen these verses, alone in this order. This is very pointed, this, this, this jabs them, man. They're looking at each other, I've given this in groups like this, I've given it in little groups, big groups, and, and people are looking at each other, like, have you ever heard that?
Yeah.
Because they don't, they don't read their Bible, for one, and they get their little pamphlet teaching on Sunday morning from a, from a church of, 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 no, no, whatever you want to call them. Right? Okay? And then at night, you know, the Lord may show up at altar call, because there's a serious, somebody's really seeking Him, but they're not getting truth.
Right.
They've never, never heard this kind of stuff. So they're going, wow, wow. Anyway, I tell them right here, I said, many are called. Many are called, God, the Bible tells us, he, he don't want any to perish. They're all called. So here's what I ask them as questions. So what I say to them, I say, just use these words, because they work. I, I tell them, I say, what happens between the calling and the choosing? What happens between being called, but God's going to choose us?
Right.
And the chosen? What happens? Many of them are just like you, they're silent, they have no idea. And I tell them, choices. See, God's going to take into power a choice away from you.
Right.
What he's doing is putting his word in front of you, giving you an opportunity to receive it.
Right.
And obey it.
Right.
Everyone I talk to this morning, he treats everybody the same. Heat up his sugarcoat for anybody.
Right.
Dig off your shoes, you're on a home, home ground.
Right.
Get out of that country. You know, for me, it was still your Harley.
Right. Come on.
I just come from my house, and you're world run, friend, they teach you that Harley Davidson's are better than your women. You give up your women, but don't give up that Harley. I mean, that's, that's part of the cult, part of the deal, okay? So when the Lord says, me, if you're going to serve me, you've got to sell that Harley. You know what I did?
Sell Harley.
Exactly. The next day. And to this day, I can tell you why I did that, other than, I wanted God. And if God against people that want God.
Right.
And you know what, if they don't want God, you're wasting your time.
Right.
But if you pray, and if you fasted, and if you ask God to help you be sensitive to who he's drawing, you're not wasting your time.
Right.
He's already been there before you, and when you put this word in front of them, they're going to do it like a sponge, man, they're sucking it up. Oh, hell, I'm feeling the Holy Ghost right here in this house.
Yes.
You've got a son that just broke right in, revelation just happened. You know, if you're asking for the right person.
Right.
You know, you're not wondering, you, God's already been there, they've already been talking to him. Lord, I've had people say, well, I was just praying for God to send me somebody. I went to a guy's door one time, knocked on his door, he opened his door, he missed men's meeting, he opened the door with his Bible flush to his chest, and he said, oh my God, he was shocked. He said, oh my God, I was just praying, God, please send me somebody. I was on my way from the men's meeting, I just caught Hood River, and the Lord spoke, please just go to this guy's house, knock on our door. I was upset, because he wasn't a men's meeting, I was caroling me.
Right.
The guy should have been there. The Lord spoke to me, yeah, I didn't say to him, Lord, no, I ain't going to there, you should have been there.
Right.
You know what I did, I did just a simple thing, obeyed him, went up there, knocked on the door, heard he was, tears, trying to come down his face. Because of obedience. So I have to have obedience also, I got to take that word of God, do what he says, amen, and do it, and then watch others be obedient. God's going to use you to give others revelation, and he can't use you if you're not obedient.
Right.
You got to be able to hear that voice, you got to move, th, these scriptures are just a guideline here. But you start using these, and like I'm showing you today, I promise you, that by this point, they're going, this guy knows what he's talking about. I don't care if it's the first time you ever give this lesson. Listen to me. I don't know how to say this, my wife don't know how to say this. I better have a conference with her, I'm sure I get the wording right. But look, they don't have to know it's the first time you taught a lesson.
Right. Come on.
All right? You just got to teach the lesson, because they've never seen this before. And when you read it, you're reading it to people that have never seen this, they're going to look at you and go, boy, you are smart for your age. Thank you. Thank you. You don't have to say, well, you know what, actually, Brother Wimmer just taught us the church, I've never seen this before either, I just thought I'd share it with you. Forget that. Go on, you're like, you know what you're doing, man. Because you've got God with you, he's with you, that's his word, you got in your hand, in your head, and he's not allowing you to fail. As we're trust faith and the seed, amen. It's been an extra timer, I'm sorry, Brother Booker. So here it says thirty-eight years, that's where I made myself a note, this book was written thirty-eight years after Jesus crucifixion. So Jude, he's writing to his other brethren, and he said, mercy, and unto you peace, love multiplied, beloved, I give you all tillings to render unto you a common salvation. Guess back, back then, there was one way to be saved. They were fighting over madness, Lutherans, and Espropalian, and all that stuff. There was one church, there was a common salvation, amen. He said, it was needful for me to write it unto you and exhort you, that you should earnestly contend for the faith which was once delivered to the saints. And right here, I go, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, Peter, Paul, I say the names of, of, of God's chosen.
Right.
I'm not talking about their pastor.
Right.
That's why you got to say their names, you got to say their, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the ones that Jesus taught, amen. Delivered to the saints, why? Because certain men have crept in, crept into what? Into the church. The Bible calls them ungodly men, they're turning, they're twisting, they're changing the grace of God into lustful evil. And then it says, they're denying the only Lord God, now listen to this, they're not denying, they're not denying that he exists. Are you getting that?
Yeah.
They're not denying that he exists, they're denying you have to obey him.
Right.
That's what they're denying.
Right.
I mean, the devil don't care if you believe in Jesus. He don't care, you, hey, you believe in Jesus all you want, just don't get baptized in that name, amen? And don't start speaking in another language, don't do that.
Right.
That's the truth.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, he don't care if you're believers. Amen. But they're denying, so here in Galatians, Paul is teaching a church that he had won, and he says, I marvel that you are so soon removed from him that called you into the grace of Christ and to another gospel. I got a question for you, this is not in the study, and it may be a rabbit, but did you know that there's five gospels in the Bible? Five different gospels in there that I found in there, in searching this. So what you don't know is you don't know what gospel these people have heard.
Right.
Okay? So the gospel of peace, that's not the gospel of salvation. The gospel of the kingdom, that's not the gospel of salvation. What's the gospel of salvation is the gospel of Christ. Now, Christ teaches the gospel of the kingdom. You see, Christ didn't fill anybody with the Holy Ghost, uh, when he was here on earth.
Right.
What he did is he, he sent out the twelve, and he sent out the seventy, eighty-two people, he said, go out there and heal, and raise from the dead, heal the sick. Tell them the kingdom of God's at hand.
Right.
The gospel of the kingdom, that's not the death barrel resurrection. So you don't know what gospel they've had.
Right.
You might not even have known there's more than one gospel. But right here, that book says, there, there's another gospel. You got to know there's more than one. So what our job is to direct them to the right gospel. And he says here, which is not another, but there's some that would trouble you and pervert the gospel of Christ. Do you know what perversion is? Perversion is not just sexual.
Right.
Listen to me here, perversion is taking something that was meant to be used a certain way, and perverted it, and using it another way.
Right.
Perverting grace. You know what that does, you know what happens when you, when you twist grace? You turn grace into disgrace. It's no longer grace anymore.
Right.
It's disgrace, it ain't going to work, hallelujah. Praise the Lord. So pervert the gospel of Christ, you see that? The gospel of Christ, that's where we're heading, that's where we're going to teach you today, that's what's going to get them in the water, that's their chance of salvation, that's their chance of receiving the Holy Ghost, there's the gospel of Christ. Amen. He said, though we are neither from heaven, preach any other gospel unto you, than which we have preached unto you. Right there, I say their names again, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, Philip, Peter. I'm not talking about your pastor, pamphlet you got, or, hey, I'm talking about this core group.
Right.
And understand where it must come from, amen. So right here, I asked them a question, and I said, these men I just mentioned, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, Peter, Paul, who taught them?
Jesus.
Little brother.
Jesus.
Do you believe in?
Jesus.
Where'd he teach them? That's what happens normally.
Everywhere.
There you go. That's what happens normally in a Bible study, because they'll say, I'll say, well, who taught them? I don't know. Who taught the disciples? Sometimes you have to help them, get somewhere. Okay? Disciples, okay? Well, who taught them? Well, Jesus taught them, okay, where did he teach them? Well, they have no idea.
Right.
They have no idea, and, and so this is the opportunity, and take them to Nicodemus. Now here, in John three, I got this, Jesus answered to Nicodemus, depending on the person. This you got to play by here, depending on the person, depending on the situation, depending on being led of the Spirit.
Right.
I will teach a portion of this and go right on by it, and I'm talking about the sound from heaven. Depending on the person. This, this for me is, is, I got to get here with that individual, that group of individuals, before I know what I'm going to do.
Right.
Because I just don't know. And it's, it's, you got to be, you got to be okay with that, because God is very good in leading you in the moment if you let him.
Right.
Amen, that's right, so, anyway, Jesus told Nicodemus, barely, barely got saved, except the man be born again, he cannot see. Right here, I'll take them to the strongest concordance and show them that that word, see, means understand. Oh, I see, it doesn't mean see with the eyes.
Right.
I take time to do that, I, 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 I show them that. Nicodemus, he asked a very good question, he says, how can a man be born when he's old, getting into the second timers on his womb? Good question, Jesus said, barely, barely got saved, except to be born of water and of spirit, he cannot enter the kingdom of God. Right here, you're going to get some people, they're going to go, huh.
Right.
They're going to react, huh? Now, most Christian churches believe you have to be born again, but how you get born again?
Right.
How, how do you, how do you, Jesus is teaching, you have to be born again, or you cannot get in. And you got to point out, this is more than just believing.
Right.
Remember, we're looking, amen, for a wedding garment, and this is something I missed. When I do the wedding garment thing, I said, we are looking for what we got to put on. I tell them, I don't want some pamphlet to tell me, I don't want some man to tell me, I want to see it in the word of God, what God wants me to put on.
Right.
So all this time, we're looking for this wedding garment, and here, I'm bringing to the point, there's got to be something, this has got to connect to the wedding garment somehow.
Right.
Okay? And then they go, oh, okay, well, here we go. So Matthew sixteen, eighteen. And I say, also unto thee, Lord Peter, upon this rock, I will build my church, the gates of hell shall not prevail against it. And I will give you the keys, I need a set of keys, who's got a set of keys? Can you borrow a set of keys? Pass them over. Keys? I pull a key out of my pocket, I get their keys, I do something. I say, keys, what, what do keys do for you?
Unlock things.
They unlock things, and unlock doors, and somebody give you a brand new automobile, you don't get the key, you're in trouble.
Right.
You got to have the key, key opens things. So Jesus gave the keys to Peter, don't forget that. Peter has the keys, I make them tell me, Peter has the keys, repeat after me, Peter has the key. I've got three of them, Peter has the key. And you got to tell them, and you got to make them say it, because if they don't say it, they're not going to catch it.
Yeah.
They got to catch it. Once you got the keys of, the kingdom of heaven. Once whoever you bind on earth, you're bound in heaven, whichever you're loose on earth, you're going to be loosed in heaven. Well, let's go on here, Matthew twenty-eight, eighteen through twenty. I never, ever, very rarely, ever teach Matthew nineteen without going to Matthew eighteen.
Right.
Twenty-eight, eighteen. Jesus said, all power. I take time to explain this. Look, he doesn't have a third of the power, he doesn't have part of the power. The Bible says he has all power. And he done to the Bible on earth.
Right.
He's done it in heaven too, amen? Hallelujah, all power. He said, go ye therefore and teach all nations, baptizing them in the name. Right here, I take time and point out that there's no s on the end of that name.
Right.
I make sure that they, they see that, I don't blow by this. If they're nodding their head and not looking at the screen, I'll make them read it. I make them read it, I've won people by them reading Bible. I've had people openly disagree with me in front of a group of people, and I'll say, okay, well, just go on here a little bit, and I give them scriptures to read. And they'll read them, I watched this, I went, it was so cool, I watched this in a Bible study, and this woman, she's reached, didn't believe him, she had the Holy Ghost by heaven, speaking out of the tongue. I give her that certain scriptures to read, and she looked at it and go, she'd read it, and sit there and shake her ass. But her reading the scripture later on, will be baptized your son, she not the Holy Ghost. Because she read, amen, she read the Bible, amen? Go ye therefore and teach all nations, if I'm teaching Eskimo people, I tell them, it's didn't see any of them.
Right.
I mean, wherever you're at, wherever you're at, whatever you're doing, it is, amen, that's their nation. And right here, baptizing them in the name, so baptism is necessary.
Right.
Because we know that, but they don't know that.
Right.
They don't go right. They go left.
That's right.
Okay? They look at them, go, and that's Jesus, that's just some of the word that's going to judge us in the last day. This is, this is the seed that's being planted very firmly, the sword has dug deep inside your heart, and you're putting this baptism seed in there. And by the time you get to the end of the study, it's, it's going to, it's going to make something happen. It's going to make something happen, amen? Hallelujah. Baptizing the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Ghost. So I ask them, I say, what's the name of the Father? Uh, God. And I said, well, okay, I said, what's the name of the Son? Oh, Jesus. What's the name of the Holy Ghost? I don't know. I said, well, I said, listen, we know what the name of the Son is. He said, and he says, teach them to observe all things whatsoever I have suggested to you.
Nope.
Thank you for paying attention, but that, that's what I ask them. Because right about here, they, they need to be brought back to center, you got to keep pulling these people back to center. Does that make sense to you? You got to line them up again, it's kind of like taking your, your gun and walking through the woods and dropping it, you hope you didn't knock it off, stuck your scope out of it.
Right.
You got to bring these people back to center here. You gotta bring these people back to center here. And this does that. And you say that, you know, "Well, everything God suggested." But if they say, "No, that's as commanded," I would say, "You're right. That's correct. Thank you for paying attention." God, that should be a clue to you, that they are paying attention.
Right.
They are worth your time.
That's right.
Amen. So I'm with you always, even to the ends of the world. So here, I ask them, "What is the name of the Father?" Well, in Exodus 6:3, God is speaking to Moses here. And he says, "I appeared to Abraham, to Isaac, and to Jacob by the name of God Almighty; but by my name Jehovah was I not known to them." If you was in camp, and you watched Brother Woodward, you understand what I'm talking about. But this is a place in Scripture, in your King James Bible, where God says, "This is my name."
Right.
Most translations remove this because of the Jewish law, or they don't wanna offend anybody. But the King James Bible, I think, is the closest thing to truth that we have. All right? And right here, he says, "By my name Jehovah." If you go to Matthew, and I use 1:21, and you go to Matthew, because I use 1:21 now, the name Jesus definition is everywhere. But if you go there, I use this one, because it's caps. And it says, "She shall bring forth a son, and shall call his name Jesus, for he shall save his people from their sins." I point out the name Jesus, and I also point out, he's not saving his dad's sins.
Right.
His dad's people's sins. He's coming saving his own people's sins.
Right.
So there, I go to the Strong's. And what you find is, you look up in the Hebrew, on this word, it says, "Jehovah." It's salvation. See, right there, I tell them, "Jesus did not come with just his dad's permission."
Right.
He come in the name of the Father.
Right.
So what is the name of the Father? Jehovah. What's the name of the Son? Jehovah. What's the name of the Holy Ghost? Well, Jesus said, "The Father will send the Holy Ghost in my name."
Right.
So in the Hebrew, it's all Jesus. In the English, we use the name Jesus. Hebrew is all Jehovah.
Right.
Can you get that?
Amen.
All right, give the word a hand there. Thank you all for paying attention. You guys are gonna be taking good notice.
What I'm doing is, I'm sending her, I'm sending each one of these, while you're preaching, I'm sending their airdropping all the Bible studies they can follow along with you, because it's a little bit difficult for them to see that.
Oh, that makes sense. I apologize. No, I thought about what I was gonna ask.
Distraction, I apologize. I'm trying to get them to help you.
Oh, good. I'm gonna take just a 20-second commercial here. I am putting together, I've already put together, it's being put into print right now, a teacher's manual for the study. But it's coming. A brother in Casa Grande Church is doing it. While I was taking a nap, I thought about, "Oh, I should text Brother Wicker and see if we can get this printed." And have some printers out here. And then I, they said, "That's my fault. I apologize." But anyway, it, all right, praise the Lord. So Jesus says salvation. So here, Luke 13:3. The Bible says here, "I tell you nay, but accept you repent; you shall all likewise perish." This is Jesus talking. I shake these keys right in their nose, man. And I say, "This has got to be a key." Now, this is said three different places in Scripture, three different gospels. If you don't repent, you're gonna perish. Don't forget that. And I shake them keys. It's an object lesson. Key, I'm gonna know. Right? Make sense? This has got to be a key. And Mark 16:15, 20. And he said to them, "Go ye unto all the world, and preach the gospel to every creature; he that believeth in is baptized, shall be saved."
Right.
I take that key, I shake it again. If you believe, good. But if you believe in baptized, Jesus said, "That word is gonna judge us in the last day."
Amen.
Right? I shake this key right on their face, man. And it does something. It connects the dots.
Right.
And that's what you're trying to do. You're connecting the dots. My wife is very good at teaching children. And she teaches me all the time, amen? But she's got ways, and she teaches children to connect the dots. And that's what we're doing here.
Right.
We're connecting, it's like teaching children, because they know nothing about the Word of God. So use an object lesson. Then Jesus said, "I give to Peter the keys. I give some keys." Revenge is gotta be a key. I shake it. How's revenge? Key? Okay, say it. Oh, then I show them baptism, I say, "Gotta be a what?" Yep! That connects the dots. To somebody that doesn't read their Bible, doesn't go to church, it may look silly, but it works.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Well, I tell you what, because you're teaching somebody that don't know their Bible, forward and backward like the rest of us. Amen. These signs, amen, so then he says, "And shall be saved, but he that believeth not, shall be damned. These signs shall fall, and believe in my name; they shall cast out devils; they shall speak in new tongues."
Right.
Now, right here, if I haven't felt before to go to 3:8 of John, I ask them, "Have you ever heard of speaking in tongues? Before?" You'd be surprised at the responses you'll get from that. If God is calling them, which he will, because you prayed, and you're fasting, right? And you're asking God for the right person, okay? You're afraid to bring this up. Don't tell me you're not. I know better. Afraid to bring this up. You bring this up, and your reaction, their reaction to you, maybe, "You know, my Aunt Agnes spoke in tongues." Or, "My great-grandma spoke in tongues."
Right.
Or, "You know, I've never heard of ever speaking in tongues."
Right.
You know, I mean, don't be scared of what you're gonna get there. All right? And depending on how the spirit leads you, come on, it is whether you're going into detail here.
Right.
And then you go back to John 3:8, and you show them that there's gonna be a sound to everybody, and everybody makes this sound. That sound, if you go in the Strong's, look that up, it's talking about a language, talking about a voice. It literally says the word "tongue" in the definitions of your Strong's Concordance. Amen?
Amen.
So here, they should speak with new tongues. If they take up serpents, I take time to tell them that that's not talking about snakes. It's felt the same as the serpent that Peter shook off in the fire. But it's a different definition. You go look that up, it's talking about ungodly men. So what it's saying there is, ungodly men will not deceive them.
Right.
And they drink any deadly thing, that's not talking about ground oil. You go and drink some ground oil, you drink that on your own. Not talking about that. But if you get out here, and somebody tries to poison you, or you drink something bad, God's gonna protect you.
Right.
Amen? Okay. All right, and they shall lay hands on the sick, they shall recover. Depending on what the conversation's been, I may take time right here and explain about how God heals.
Right.
I let the Spirit guide me there. All right? Make sense? And they shall recover. Then I go down here to 20, and I said, "They went forth, and they preached everywhere, the Lord working with them, confirming the word with signs." I have found this so true, it doesn't matter where you go.
Right.
Doesn't matter where you're at, what part of the country, if you've got guts enough to preach God's word, if you've got guts enough to back up his man or his woman.
That's right. That's right.
You want the courage enough to lay hands on, touch that? God will go, "Oh, oh, oh, heal that."
Right.
"Oh, oh, oh, fix that."
Right.
I mean, he'll do it. Amen. Jesus, in Luke 4:4, says, "It is written, that man should not live by bread alone, but by every word of God." And here, I take time to tell them, "Look, I may have showed you a lot of Bible that you've never seen. That doesn't mean you take it and tear it out of your Bible and throw it away just because you don't understand it."
Right.
But we're saying, "By every word." And what Bible study does is give you understanding. If you already know more tonight than you've ever known in the past, I'm probably gonna Bible study.
Right.
Just on your teachers.
Right.
And they're giving something they've never, ever, ever had before. So you're teaching them. Amen. So Luke 24, these are the words that I spoke to you while I was with you. And then 45, it says, "Then opened he their understanding, that they might understand the Scriptures."
Right.
You gotta know, and just because we're these Bible teachers, and we're doing the Word of God, you may have to teach that a few times.
Right.
They might understand the Scriptures. These guys were with him, these were his chosen. They were with him for three and a half years. And Jesus says, "I wanna teach you this stuff, and you might get it."
Right.
Isn't that amazing? But it's there. But he opened their understanding. You know, I have taught, I've taught a lady, several elders in their eighties, amen? And they read, have been reading their Bible every day for years and years, and never seen this.
Right.
You know, the opening of their understanding. And I tell them, "That's okay, because the opening of understanding has to come from the Word of God. Jesus has to do it."
Right.
Aren't you glad that we could feel it in this place today?
Amen.
Aren't you glad that we could know that he's helping us? They're gonna do this, they're gonna do this on one-on-one, one-on-two, one-on-five basis, not on the minute. Because somebody is explaining God's word, God will help you. He will give them understanding. As a pastor, sometimes I'll preach, and I'll go, "Man, I wonder if anybody got it?" And somebody that I know didn't get it, will come to me a couple days later, go, "Wow, that really affected me. That really touched me." I'm going, "You? We don't know." You gotta give room for the Word of God to open their understanding, amen? Amen. And he says here, "It is written, for whom Christ has suffered, rise the third day, that repentance and remission of sins should be preached in his name." Yeah, this is key, this is key stuff. There's repentance, remission of sins. What's that? Well, we know that baptism's got something to do in there, right? And we know his name, because it said, "Go baptize in the name of," right? So this is key stuff, right? Amen. And it's gonna start, amen, in Jerusalem. And he says, "Behold, I send the promise of my Father upon you; but tear and wait," amen. Acts 1:1-8. Here, it depends on how much time you're at, depends on where you're at. Another thing, I'm trying to, actually, believe it or not, I'm trying to speed through this, and I'll take two hours. And it's causing me to skip some things. When you get to the place, if you spent forty minutes getting to where Jesus gives Peter the keys, if you guys have headphones, the first time you're doing Bible study, you're at the table, you're having cookies, coffee, or whatever, and you spent forty minutes, and you realize that you just now got to the keys, that's a really good stopping point. I've found that that works, Brother Wicker. I stop right there. And I tell them, I say, "Jesus gave Peter the keys to the kingdom. Do you wanna know what they are? Be decided, or you're gonna come back tomorrow and I hear them."
Huh? Bring more cookies.
That's right. Yeah, I'll put it out there, where you're not gonna know the keys until you come back. So in this, in this part here, we're just one of those team where I find this, and we're not stopping now, we're done. When you get to this point, you're committed. Even if people are yawning, or whatever, getting up and walking out, don't matter, you gotta go. Amen? Hallelujah. So here, this is a place where I tell them that this scripture here just really amazed me. "To whom also he showed himself alive after his passion, by many impolite priests, being seen of them forty days, speaking of the things pertaining to the kingdom of God." This is the farmer version that I had before I found the Scripture. I thought Christ died on the cross, they threw him in the tomb, he got up in three days, he went down, got the keys, some death hella in the grave, he come by, shook the keys at the boys, and said, "Hey, I'm on my way to heaven. I'm gonna go build you a palace up there, and a mansion, and I'm gonna come back and pick you up." And he's gone. I'll tell you what, ninety-nine percent of the people out there believe that.
Right.
They don't know any better. Take time here. That's why the Lord wanted this scripture in here. Hey, forty days, Jesus was with them out of the grave.
Right.
Amen.
That's ten days over a month.
Yeah.
A lot of eating, drinking going on there, so a lot of explaining. Well, what was they explaining? As you asked, what to preach.
Right.
The things pertaining to the kingdom of God. Not just how to stay in the kingdom, but how to get in it.
Right.
So these teachings are what they, this is very important, this is why God put this in the study. Yeah, oh, and He said to them, "John's only baptized in water, but you're gonna be baptized in something else." Right about here, I ask them, I say, "Do you don't understand what baptism is?" Some of them know, some of them don't. Well, they think it's a spray clean or something, well, baptism is a submersion.
Yeah.
When you get baptized in water, you go underneath something. Every bit of your body is submerged in water. When you are baptized, amen, with the real Holy Ghost and with a fire and a zeal that comes with that, you are submerged.
Right.
You are forever changed. You're never, ever, ever the same.
Right.
Never, ever the same. That baptism is a life-changing thing, amen. And He says, "You shall receive power after that baptism, after the Holy Ghost come upon you." To do what? To be His witness.
Right.
Amen. And right here, the Lord put it in this verse. "In those days Peter stood in the midst of the disciples, and the number of them were about a hundred and twenty." That's why I went to the upper room. That's, excuse me, that's why I stayed in the upper room.
Right.
Not why I went to the upper room. There were like three hundred, or what's the number? Three seventy or something went to the upper room. A lot of them didn't hang.
Right.
And wait.
Right.
But there was, you know, many people think that just the twelve, not the Holy Ghost. No, a hundred and twenty of them. So on the day of Pentecost was fully come, amen. Suddenly there came a sound from heaven, right here, I started to tell them, "That sound doesn't come from our farmer. That sound does not come from the devil, it comes from heaven."
Right.
Heaven wants you to have that sound. Heaven wants that to come, right? It's a rushing mighty wind, filled all the house in the city. It appears to them the cold tongues like a fire. They were all filled with the Holy Ghost and began to speak with other tongues as a spirit in them others. Again, I say, "That spirit does not come from our farmer. That spirit does not come from the devil." You see, I had to fight something when I got to the region, because they believed that it was picking the tongues of the devil.
Right.
Right.
The shaman's taught them that.
Right.
As far as my limited knowledge is, Sister Blackshire, an elder before she was Blackshire, got run out of thoughts of youth, because she's teaching this. Yeah, so when I got there, I got stuck in under the cover and got my lease on some property, and I ain't going nowhere.
Right.
I'm there, they gotta deal with me. I've had shaman's come to my door, gonna break my neck.
Right.
This little guy, not as tall as him, pretty thin, under my door, and he's mad, telling me he's gonna break my neck. You know what I did to him? I said, "Well, before you do that, you wanna come in and have a cup of coffee or something?" I invited him out. As soon as I said, "Well, before you do that, you wanna come in and let's talk about it?" It completely disarmed him. He didn't know what to do. He was expecting a fight. He was expecting something different than what he got.
Right.
He wasn't expecting kindness. Okay, he wasn't expecting that. I was no more afraid of him than a man in the moon, man. And I invited him in, I took him upstairs and away. She's getting ready for Sunday school downstairs, we go upstairs, and we start talking. And I took him a cup of coffee up there, you know what I did? I put the Word of God in front of him. That's all he's gonna help us.
Yeah.
And you know, I said, "Hey, let me show you what I'm teaching her." And I opened up this Bible study, and I started showing him something. And he was, "Oh, I've never seen that." And I said, "Yeah." And we pushed his back, and he says, "You don't?" He goes, "You're all right." And he started bringing his grandchildren to our church. He don't jump himself, but he would make sure his grandkids made it. Coming, shaman, that he'd been taught to speak in tongues of the devil. It's not of the devil. The Spirit gives them the evidence. Hallelujah, there was all kinds of people there in Jerusalem, devout men, amen. Look at this, there were some that were confounded, there were some that marveled, there were some that mocked, I kind of went through that this morning. I always tell people, because they're normally ninety-nine percent positive, that they were one of them that mocked something they don't understand. That's okay, that's part of it. Let me ask you a question, do you think a fish winds the rain? Do you think a fish, the earth is raining outside?
Right.
Nope.
Come on, think about that. You know, just because we get this kind of stuff, it does not, should not bother us or like, it's part of it. Hey, we live in that.
Right.
That's all, you know what? If you're with a bunch of people that don't believe this, you're in the right group. If you're trying to teach them, if you're trying to reach them.
I try.
You better not be drinking, smoking, doing dope with them, all right? But it's okay to mingle with them and say, "Hey, have you heard of this yet?" Because if all you do is stay in this group, you ain't gonna win nobody.
Right.
You gotta get out of these more laws, man. You gotta take this over, amen.
That's exactly right.
He says, "These are not," I told you, I showed you this morning, "These are not dropping as you suppose. This is what was spoken by the prophet Joel. I'm gonna pour out my spirit upon all flesh." And there it is in Joel. Many could be surprised, you know, Acts 2:38 is just, we memorize it, we know it, it's part of our life, and you can't believe how many people have never even looked at the book of Acts.
Right.
I've had preachers tell me of other denominations, "Oh, I hate that book."
Right.
You know why they hate it? Because it proves everything they believe in false.
Right.
And it's part of the Bible, amen. Acts 2:36, Peter uses the keys. "That all the house of Israel know and surely that God hath made that same Jesus whom you crucified." And I take time here, and I tell them, "Do you understand that God come down with the Holy Ghost and He filled His chosen hundred and twenty in the upper room?" And immediately, well, you know, God has such awesome mercies, immediately, He went after the next group who had crucified Him.
Right. Come on.
Isn't that cool? Our God loves people. There are His, He come to save them from their sins, amen. So Peter is bold enough to say, "Amen, that God hath made that same Jesus whom you crucified, both Lord and Christ, and they heard this, and were pricked in their heart." Amen. That's what the Word of God will do to people. It'll do something you can't with your own words.
Right.
You gotta use, that's why you gotta use Bible.
Right.
Right.
You gotta explain, you explain Bible with Bible.
Right.
Because it's a lot better than your words.
Right.
Because your words will muddy things up and make things too smooth. God's work goes, "Ah, yeah."
Right.
You're hooked.
Right.
What are you gonna do with that? Huh? Oh, hallelujah, amen.
Amen.
Amen. They're pricked in their heart, and Peter said to them, and the rest of the apostles, men and brothers, they said to Peter, "What shall we do?" I tell people, every living person has to get to this point. I had to get there, you're gonna have to get there. I put my finger right at them, you're gonna have to get there. And this is where Peter uses the keys. So Peter said to them, "Repent." By this time, they're saying, "One of the keys." That's right. And be baptized.
Right.
One of the keys, right? And the name of Jesus Christ. One of the keys, right? For the remission of sins, there it is. That's why, because remission is different than removal.
Right.
Remission is gone forever. Saying, in the old days, they would sacrifice all their goats and sheep and everything and roll back the sins for a year. Huh?
Right.
Okay, they just remove them for a year. That's not remission. Remission is where they completely wipe out of God's book and out of God's memory, amen. "And you shall receive what the Holy Ghost, the key," amen. Hallelujah. And this promise is not unto you, not, the promise unto you and your children. If this is an adult and he has kids, I stop him. Do you understand that this is not just for you?
Right.
Do you understand that it's for your children? You don't, you want your children to have a better life than you had?
Right.
You want your children to struggle with addiction like you have all your life? Most of the time, man, right here, sometimes I never get past this point. Right here, the tears start coming, they go, "Oh, no, no, I see it, I wanna be baptized, let's do it." If they ever tell me that they want to be baptized, that's time to stop, get them in the water.
Right.
I taught you this morning, our job is to get them in the water.
Right.
They teach them repentance, get them in the water.
Right.
That's our job. So I come back and teach them the rest of this later.
Right.
But my, the whole, what you don't do is go, "Well, that's real good, I'm glad you want to be baptized, and I'm not done yet."
Right.
That's the worst thing you can do. It is, if they don't want to get in the water, take them in the water.
Right.
Whether summer's going to the jacuzzi, or going to the water. I don't even gotta say that to them now, and we were in flow in this deal. He'd just jump up and enter the jacuzzi.
Right.
He knows what's coming. And pastors gotta have help like that.
Right.
He, he's gotta have a look at you and eye and talk. "I'm gone, it's ready, I'm on my way, I'm doing my part, Pastor."
Right.
Come on, now.
Come on.
But this is a good place to bring their children involved in this. Some people will say, "Well, you know what? I really want my children baptized, but I don't want to be baptized." I just might tell them, "That ain't gonna work." They're gonna do what you do.
That's right.
You need to be a leader. Whether you realize it or not, you are the priest of your home. You need to stand up and show them what to do.
Right.
Or learn their laws. I tell you, you need to like, tell them, "Hell's hot, life's miserable without God." Though on the afterlife, amen, come on, somebody.
Come on.
Amen, give the Lord a hand back. All right, the promise unto you and your children, to all that are far off, even as the Lord or God shall call, "Save yourselves from some toward generation." I look at them and say, "Do you know you can save yourself?"
Right.
"How can you save yourself?" Well, it's right here. "They gladly received His word, and they were baptized. The same day were added to them three thousand souls."
Right.
"And they continued in what we love today, and what we preach today, and that's the apostles' doctrine, and we fellowship, breaking bread and in prayers." Amen, afterglow, you do that?
Yes.
Hallelujah. Okay, so this right here is the end of that portion of the study. The next one's here, it says, I'm gonna run through it pretty fast, because you guys know all this stuff anyway, and I've already, rather went way over my time already. Philippa down in the city of Samaria, he preached Christ unto them. You cannot preach Jesus Christ without repentance.
Right.
"People of one accord, give heed. Why? They see and they heard the miracles that He did. Unclean spirits were coming out of them with a loud voice, amen. Many that were possessed and were pausing and all that, they were healed. There was great joy in the city." Listen to me, when somebody repents and really repents, they're coming in here with this weight.
Right.
They're weighted down.
That's right.
And they be trying to be strong, but they were heavy. And if they get called upon to alter repentance, amen, they come up here and repent. Then they will be healed right here when that happens.
Amen.
And there's gonna be great joy. And that does not mean they're saved.
Right.
Amen.
Does not mean, and that's what's going on here. There was great joy, not in the tavern, but in the city. Amen, hallelujah. But when they believed, Philip didn't stop preaching when they repented.
Right.
He kept preaching concerning the things of the kingdom of God. That's what Jesus come back and taught for forty days. In the name of Jesus Christ, they were baptized, men and women. When the apostles at Jerusalem heard that, they sent another Peter. Why Peter?
The keys.
That's right.
Peter's got the keys, right? How many of the guys say that? When they come down, they prayed for them, and they might receive the Holy Ghost. But the Bible tells us, "He was fallen upon none of them, only they were baptized in the name of Lord Jesus, and their hands on earth receive the Holy Ghost." Acts 10, one of my favorite. "There's a devout man, is he feared God with his whole house, paid his tithes and give to the poor? Amen, he prayed always. An angel come unto him." If you go look up this word, "angel," it says messenger. I'm sorry. Messenger, I've literally taught people. Went to Jones, Lawrence Jones and Amherst, and showed him this scripture. I just looked right at him and said, "I'm your messenger." Do you understand that God's using you as an angel of God when you take this lesson? Are you taking the Bible to somebody?
Right.
You're a messenger, that's why you don't use your own word.
Right.
And angels don't use their own word.
Right.
Come on, now, that makes sense, brother, oh, hallelujah. So, the angel sent to him, and he said, "Cornelius, ain't this awesome? The God he was praying to sent him a messenger."
Right.
You don't know, you know, you can try to out-fake God, but they don't work. You're gonna be walking down the street, and all of a sudden, here, the Lord's pulling you to talk to this person. You don't know if that person was praying, that morning, "God, send me somebody, I need somebody to help me. I need some help, Lord, would you help me?"
Right.
So what do you do, and you go, "Oh, he don't look right."
Come on.
Or, "Oh, she don't look right."
Right.
You think all heaven is rejoicing over that?
Nope. Nope.
No, you gotta have faith in the seed. You gotta have faith in what you've got is gonna change. You go to them and say, "Hey, the Lord told me you were gonna tell me that He loves you." And I've had people that started weeping and crying, "Oh, I would just, I would just pray, and God would send me somebody." And you're going, "Oh, me, God chose me." That's why you got the Holy Ghost. That's the only reason He saved you, is because you're gonna help somebody out.
Right.
Amen.
You gotta get that. If we don't get that, Brother Wicker, we're missing it. That's why God saved me. That's why God saved me from drugs and adultery and riding with them hell's angels. God wanted me to ride with His angels.
Right.
God wanted me to become one of His messengers.
Right.
Amen. God would like to save you, and it's the same for you, amen. He says, "What is it, Lord?" He goes, "Your prayers, your arms, and come up from the mortal, or God." Now, send men to Joppa and call on Sina, whose name is Peter. Right here. Why's he calling Peter? Oh, he's got the keys. About this time, they're figuring out that what Peter preaches is the key.
Right.
Repetition, how do you teach young kids?
Repetition.
Repetition. Huh? Come on, this works. All right, certain age, Peter, so he lodged in Simon and Tanner. He's gonna tell you what the honest to do. It's amazing, you can look at some of these Bibles here, put little quotations in black. Some of them have taken this out. If I'm in a Bible bookstore, and I'm looking at a different version or whatever, I go to this scripture, I make sure they haven't taken this out of there. I don't want, I don't want their Bible that takes that out of there. Amen? So in Acts 11, this is, you can either teach this or not, this is when Peter goes back to the brother in Judea, and he's talking about Cornelius. And he said, "Send him to Joppa, call for Sina, whose name is Peter. He shall tell thee words, for by them all thy house shall be saved." And this guy's got kids. Take time to read this scripture, because it's not just about him.
Right.
About his entire house, amen. Getting back, he shows up to Cornelius. Cornelius, you can understand, he's just like all them college kids, he's been repenting.
Right.
He's had an angel visit him. He's trying to get right with God. He's there to hear. Peter shows up and he says, "Man, you've done well to come. Now, we're all present here before God to hear all things which are suggested of you." If they can't pay attention by now.
Yeah.
Okay? But no, they're commanded of these, so Peter starts preaching Jesus. Forty-four, when Peter gets back, these words of the Holy Ghost fell on them, which heard the word. "The Jews that were with him of the circumcision they believed were astonished, that were on to Gentiles also reported unto him, for they heard the Holy Ghost. And they know, when they heard his speaking in tongues, they made to my God." Now, right here is part of that deal where I think, where my mind kind of twists a little bit and I go, you know what Peter's saying there? He's saying, "Can any man forbid water?" You know what he's really saying? He's really saying, "Hey, you guys, if you don't think of something real quick," he's talking to the Jews, "if you don't think of something real quick, I'm gonna have to baptize these Gentiles."
Right. Come on.
You better think of something quick here, because they just got the Holy Ghost, just like we did. And we know there's another step.
Right.
That's what I think was going on there, and you guys better hurry up, you better say something, you better help me here. Am I missing something?
Come on.
Yeah, woo! All them Jews are looking around at each other going, "I don't know what to do." God fills them with the Holy Ghost. And guess what? I don't care what they look like, I don't care how many piercings they got, I don't care how they come in that door. If God fills them with the Holy Ghost, you better dig them with a fork. They don't care how they come in that door. We care how they leave. Oh, hallelujah. "And any man forbid water, but he should not be baptized, which it receives the Holy Ghost as well as we." And he commanded, commanded them. Acts 19, Paul, as a chorus, Paul passing through the upper coast, and it says, "They found certain students that were discipling students, and he received the Holy Ghost since you believe." We've not so much heard of being any Holy Ghost. And he questioned their baptism. Well, "Why were you baptized?" "We're baptized into John the Baptist." And here Paul says, "John early baptized with the baptism of repentance, saying to the people, 'I shouldn't believe on him to come after him,' that's on Christ Jesus." When they heard this, they were rebaptized. They were baptized a second time.
Right.
Where somebody's already been baptized, "Oh, I've already been baptized." I just go, "Okay, that's good, let's follow my study." Oh, you like that here? And I said, "See, these guys, they were baptized correctly, so you need to be rebaptized." And Paul, his hands on them, spoke in tongues, prophesied, amen. "Baptism doeth also now save us. He that believes in this baptized shall be saved." There's a straight gate and a broad way that leads to destruction. Straight is a gate, and narrow is the way that leads into light. And few there be that find it. None of us gonna find this. Not everyone will say, "Lord, Lord, so enter to the kingdom of heaven." But it's he that doeth, amen? Look at this, eight souls were saved by water. Baptism also now saves us. Hallelujah. Acts 22, "What are you waiting on? Why you tearing? Arise, be baptized, and wash away your sins," calling on the name of the Lord. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Look at this, Galatians 3. Now, this is some scripture here from Acts 9 to Acts 4. You can read that if you want, I'm not gonna take time tonight. Depends on where you're at. If you've had a break, and this is your understatement, read it. If you're doing it all in one night, don't read it, go onto Galatians 3. "You are children, you are all the children of God by faith in Christ Jesus." Many preachers out there stopped right there. Look what twenty-seven says, "For you have been baptized into Christ. You have put on..."
Right.
"All, all wedding garment."
Yeah.
Baptism has something with a wedding garment. Here is the Bible telling you what you have to put on.
Right.
That's why the guy was silent. Because there was only one doctrine back then. There was only one way. And when he come in, he was silent, because he said, "I don't need that, I don't need that."
Yeah.
This brings it to, right here, some things are going through their mind. They're thinking, "You know what? There was something to put on." This guy knows what he's talking about. This person knows what he's talking about, amen.
Right.
Hallelujah. You gotta put on Christ, amen. Galatians three seventeen, "Whatsoever you do in the word of God, to all in the name of our Jesus." That includes baptism. And right here, Galatians two eight to twelve. "Beware lest any man spoil you with your philosophy, fain deceit, after the tradition of men, after the rituals of the world, and not after Christ." Do you understand where this is in order here?
Yeah.
Do you see the order? Listen to me, I must form enough to put that in order. God put that in order.
Right.
That's why it's there. Don't change that.
Right.
It's there for a purpose, okay? Amen. You're buried with him in baptism, verse twelve says. "Or in him, well, of all the corners of the Godhead bodily." Amen. Hallelujah. The last day, the great day of the feast, Jesus stood as Christ, and he man thirst and come to me. "And he that believeth on me, as his scripture has said..." Right here, I'm telling the same pamphlet. I'm showing you the word of God.
Right.
I'm showing you the word of life. Amen, this is something you need to obey.
Right.
Need to do this.
Yeah.
Out of your belly will flow waters of living water. He's talking about the Holy Ghost here. And the Bible says, "These men with the spirit which they have believed on him should receive the Holy Ghost." And I give them because of Jesus. And I glorify. There is one body, one spirit. You're calling, one hope that you're calling. One Lord, one faith, one baptism, and you better get that one right.
Right.
Yes.
You see, I speak that. I never give that Bible study without adding that in there. You better get this one right. Because they probably have been baptized by the Trinity, the titles, or whatever. You better get this one right. Because here's the deal. If they go, "Well, I don't know about that Holy Ghost, but I see I need to be baptized in Jesus' name." You've done your job.
Right.
And it's your job to follow.
No.
It's really not, Brother Wicker. It's your job to get them in the tank.
Yeah.
Right.
So you give them the opportunity to do what?
Baptize.
That's the one I'm looking for. A doctor just called, what do you give them the opportunity to do?
Obey.
Obey.
Good job. That is exactly why we give Bible study. We're giving people an opportunity to obey the word of God.
Right.
And they take you up on that, says, "Oh, you're gonna be a soul winner. Oh, my, my, my." Oh, come on, Pastor.
I'm willing.
Woo! Amen. We give them the opportunity to obey this.
Right.
"One God, Father, will bubble through all unto you all. And you that are troubled, rest with us, when the Lord Jesus shall be revealed from heaven with his mighty angels, angels in flame and fire, taking vengeance on them that know not God, and that believe not the gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ."
Right. No.
Obey.
No.
Obey.
Obey.
Yeah? You're sure? That's how that works? Listen, people think he's coming back all loving W. Look, he's already been here all loving W.
Yeah.
He's not coming back like a real teddy bear this next time. He's coming back in flame and fire. Now, look at this. He's gonna take vengeance on them that know not God. Don't know who he is. They believe in three gods. He'll take vengeance on them. Amen. And to them that obey not the gospel of the word Jesus Christ.
Right.
This, who will be punished in everlasting destruction. Sounds like hell, doesn't it?
It does.
Because our testimony among you was believed. I'm getting down to the nitty-gritty here. James says, "Wherefore lay apart all filthiness, superfluity, and naughtiness, and receive the meekness, with meekness the engraffed word, which is able to save your soul."
Yeah.
Did you get it, Bible students?
Yeah.
Did you get it? What can save them? What can save them?
The word.
A word. Not your words.
No.
That's why I'm using Bible. That's why there's no commentary with this. Let me tell you what, depending on the students you teach, your commentary will change. The teacher's manual is coming out for this, has given different instances that could happen, that have happened to me, all right? And you can re-go through that, but it could be different for you.
Right.
This is not a cookie kind of deal.
No.
I had one guy tell me, "Well, this can't work, because it's the same Bible study for everybody." Well, it's the same Bible, but it's different commentary.
Right.
Everybody's gonna have different questions.
Right.
You know? And you gotta be able to roll with it. You gotta have faith in the seed. But look at that, the Bible tells us that the word, amen, is able to save your souls.
That's right.
So, be doers of the word, not just hearers. So here's, here God is reaching for them at the last of this Bible study. And he said, "Don't just listen to this, but do it, because if you don't, you're deceiving your own selves." See, that's not you telling them that. And I've had people get up, you can't win fifty-four people that read online and have a few people that said, "No, I don't want this."
Right.
That's gonna happen.
Right.
Yeah.
You don't go, "Oh, God, oh, no, I ain't never teaching this again."
Right.
Grow up.
Come on.
You know, people, you, people are gonna... But see, here's the beauty about this. They're not rejecting you.
That's right.
I had issues, just like Moses had issues. A pastor up there in the north, people were mad at me, they're mad at me now. You know what the Lord told me? Say, they had told Moses, he said, "They're not rejecting you, they're rejecting me."
Yeah.
They're rejecting my way of doing things.
Yes.
I can't help that. And neither can you, on somebody you put in a lot of time with, reject God.
Right.
So, guess what? He gets off the lure, I'll catch another one.
Right.
You don't just quit fishing.
I try.
Come on now, you did it. One of my favorites here, one of my favorites. "The way we're a son," talking about Jesus. "He learned he obedient from the things he suffered, being made perfect, and became the author of eternal salvation unto all them that..."
Obey.
That's a beautiful word.
Isn't that something? And see, this should cement into your mind, and this is what I'm trying to do tonight. Need to catch this. You are the conduit. God's using you to give them an opportunity to obey his word.
Right.
Yes.
That's your job. It's not that difficult.
Amen?
But it does have to be spoken.
Yeah.
And it does have to be taught. And it just so happens that the way he's in order of this, the way it works, man, it's just boom, boom, it just, ooh. Oh, I tell you what, I promise, I don't know who I'm talking to, but I promise, I prophesy right now, if you'll get behind the word of God, God will get behind you.
Yes.
God will get behind you, what you do, whoever you touch. You will prosper, the kingdom of God. You will prosper.
Amen.
You gotta have faith in the seed.
Amen.
Faith, don't have faith in your own ability. Forget your ability.
Right.
It's not about your ability. It's about the word, which is able to save their soul.
Amen.
They got the conduit. Amen. They learn the bad evil. Amen. He became, being made perfect, and became the author of eternal salvation. Thank you, Sister Farmer, for reading the scriptures at the beginning of this lesson.
Amen.
Do you understand that Jesus is the author and finisher of your faith?
Right.
You know what would be a really good ending to your faith? That you'd have faith enough to teach others.
Right.
That's where he's ending. He's the author of eternal salvation. He wants nothing more than his children to teach what he gives them.
Right.
Isn't that beautiful?
Right.
Oh, man, I mean, that's the Lord I serve, amen.
Amen.
So here we go, Luke six forty-six. I want you to watch this. "Why call me Lord, Lord, and do not the things which I say?" You know what he's saying there? He's saying, "You cannot call me Lord if you do not obey me."
Come on.
My goodness.
Yeah.
That's what that says.
That's exactly what it says.
All right? That's pretty powerful, isn't it? So you read this to them. "Why call me Lord, Lord, if not the things which I say? Whosoever cometh to me, heareth my sayings, doeth them." I'm gonna show you who he's like. He's like a man who's built a house. He digged deep, laid a foundation on a rock, and that rock was Jesus Christ, amen. On the floodgale, and a stream beat to him and lived on the house, could not shake it, for it was fountain upon a rock.
Right.
The Bible was on to talk about a different kind of house. "He that heareth and doeth not, is like a man without a foundation, built a house." Looks the same on the outside. Okay, but when the storm comes, when the stream did beat to him and lived on the house, and the ruin of that house was great. Right here is where I talk to the dad that has all the kids.
Right.
I said, "You know why the house, why that ruin was so great? That house and the story? Because everything underneath that man's authority. Everybody that was trusted in that man for leadership did it.
Right.
Because dad didn't take care of business. That's why you gotta lead.
Come on.
That's why you gotta lead, Dad. And if you want your kids saved, you show them how.
I tried.
You don't just do what I say, you do what I do.
Right.
Right, Pastor?
That's exactly.
And so you put that to them, it's sharp. It's sharp, but it's okay. Be bold enough to tell somebody this. Hey, what about this older generation? We're talking to, maybe teaching grandparents, where the grandkids are gonna be lost.
Come on.
Yeah.
That'll work the same with that. The kids won't listen to you, even the grandkids will. Huh? Come on now. Hallelujah.
Come on.
Our job is to teach this word. Now comes the closing of the Bible study. Are we going to obey the word of God?
Tried. Amen.
This is the closing.
Yes.
Hey, we're trying to bring somebody to a place that they're gonna make a decision. This is not search for truth.
Right.
This is not exploring God's word. No, no. We're bringing them to a place now, where they can decide now what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
This thing is about results now. Once you get them in the tank, when they come out of the tank, you set up search for truth, or organize work, whatever you do for your eight, ten, twelve, twenty-six week Bible study.
Right.
But I tell you what, if you get them in the tank and they get the Holy Ghost, that twenty-six week Bible study will be profitable.
Right.
You'll have a leader in your church, you're growing a pillar there. Right? But if you're just trying to get them in the water for twenty-six weeks, and they get to the end of that, say, "Well, nah, I'm gonna do that." You wasted twenty-six weeks.
Right.
I'm talking about one day, two at the most, bring them to a decision point. Put it in their hands.
Come on.
Stand with me. Put it in their hands. Your job is to give them a chance to obey the word of God.
Right.
And right here, what are you gonna do with what I showed you? I've had all kinds of people, I've had all kinds of answers to that question. I've had some say, "Well, pretty plain, isn't it? I need to be baptized."
Right.
Right, sir. Fill a tank. The ones that have come to me, Pastor, and said, "Well, can I get baptized in a few days?" Most of the time, never happens.
They never come back.
They don't come back.
And you gotta do it right away.
That's it?
I do it right away, right now. Gotta be done.
That's right.
This is the closing. We're going to obey the word of God or not. So why are you tearing? Why are you waiting? Arise! The Lord is speaking to them. Arise and be baptized. Don't arise and argue. Don't arise and walk out that door. No, God's saying, "It's your turn."
Yes.
Arise and be baptized, this is your moment.
That's right.
Now, you're being called, watch your choice.
Right.
And you may say, "Well, Brother Farmer, that sounds pretty harsh." Maybe it is. But I'm gonna tell you what, and it works.